October 15th, school committee meeting to order. We all please rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. Thank you. Those things that matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed in fact may be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This video meeting is being videotaped for cable. We would like to welcome Kelsey McCollum as our student rep tonight. Welcome, Kelsey. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of our September 17th, 2018 school committee meeting.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recognitions. Oh, this is a great, great thing. Two students have perfect scores and actually one of our students had a perfect score of math and English. So, that's a tremendous, tremendous accomplishment for... First, we'd like to call up Zach Bellady for the grade eight math perfect score. Zach, congratulations. Congratulations.
Senor.
Nice. Great job. And Ava Mellrich, grade six, perfect score, ELA, perfect score math. You all great?
I think, I was gonna say, you know, I'm gonna talk a little bit later, but I think no matter what the test is, everyone here has always taken tests and knows how hard it truly is to get every single question on a test right. And these tests are very rigorous and challenging, but there's also open response questions and paragraphs and essays that they have to write. And when you think about that, not even like one point off, you know? So, to me, that is an amazing feat. So, congratulations.
Congratulations. It really is, it shows your hard work, dedication. Good job, kids.
Representative as well.
Good. We'll take a short recess so you guys, I'm sure you have homework, you'd like to get out of here and now head home.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, we're back. Superintendent's update, Dr. Oakley.
Sure. So, it's that time of the year again while the superintendent's goals. And we had discussed several years ago when the new evaluation plan came out that although it calls for in the regulations to evaluate superintendent every year, that sometimes it's hard to have goals that are just a year because you need extended time to do things. So, some of the goals that I have had in the past have been one-year goals and some extended two-year goals. And with that said, I have my goals for this year for you. And again, the first two are actually the second year from last year. And one of them is that during the 2017-2019 school years, we'll restructure all aspects of the district improvement process, including the strategic planning and school improvement plan processes, tools and format. And you know that this came out of the fact that for years we had a strategic planning structure that was the same, but it was getting kind of stale. And there wasn't enough connection with the school improvement plans, the super, the my goals, the school committee goals and the district. Because of that, there were a lot of goals, but not a lot of rubber hit in the road when we actually were working on them and getting them done. And they weren't necessarily funneling down into the building because it was a disconnect. So, that's really what it came out of. And as I explained last year, we adopted the Planning for Success model through the DESE of strategic planning. And during the last school year, we set our three pillars of success, our strategic objectives and strategic initiatives, which I will kind of combine with my goals with the third bullet on here because that's what I'm talking about now. But here's a draft that was kind of updated actually since the beginning of the year because we met with the administrators this morning to kind of prioritize the areas we would work on for year one. And we have the three pillars of success, rigorous and relevant curriculum, two professional practice and three student support wellness and safety. We have the strategic objectives, you can see, and the strategic initiatives that the team put together in June. So, the next step for this year is to write action plans for these initiatives and also then tie the school improvement plans to the same model as the district plan. So, that means that the next time that the principals do their school improvement plans, which you noticed that we skipped last year because of the fact that we wanted to tie them in better. So, when they do them for this coming year, this next time with their school improvement councils, they'll actually use the pillars of success and they'll have the rigorous and relevant curriculum, the professional practice and student support and wellness. And those will be their overarching pillars of success. And then some of the strategic initiatives will be the same, but they may have different actions that fall underneath them, so they'll be tied together. So, that's really where we are. So, this Wednesday at four o'clock, we're having a Planning for Success meeting of the group of people that met in June to work on this. And we'll be working on the action plan. The ones on this draft that are highlighted in maroon are the priorities that we said we'd work on now. All these things, our initiatives, we believe need to be pursued in order to make us even more successful, but you can't do everything at once. So, this is a multi-year plan, but we did prioritize that these are the ones that we'll do, the action plans and actually start working on now. Then we will meet again and we'll work out action plans for the other ones, but they won't be in year one, that they'd actually be worked on. So, that's what we're gonna focus on. So, if any of you would like to come Wednesday in the learning comments, I believe, then we'd be more than happy to have you. Or if anyone else from the community or other teachers, because I know we had a core group that came in June to work on this, but we're always open to having more people for this. So, that kind of ties in with that last one, Planning for Success, but also that was one of my two-year goals. And then the second one came really, this was two years also from the targeted review that we had, the district review that we had. But we also kind of developed it and knew internally that we wanted to update all of our curriculum. So, develop and implement a plan to restructure written curriculum documents to include sufficient detail and actionable items to meet the needs of all learners. We didn't, we had a core template, but we really wanted to make it more actionable and not, and add differentiation and also look at bringing in essential questions and those types of things. So, as of last year, we did adopt a new template. The science teachers, pre-K through 12, actually were kind of the guinea pigs of the new model and worked. And then I gave them feedback on those things. And now we'll be working on it throughout the rest of the district. And one of the things that came out of actually our Planning for Success is, you know, that this year we added a part-time curriculum directive for elementary. So, that's a big help because this is really, really more than a two-year plan, but at least to develop the plan and get it going. You know, it's going to continue to go after two years, even if it's not one of my goals. It's already in place and it's gonna go because it's just a, it's a huge, huge task. And one of the reasons for that is we have curriculum, but the state has updated the math, the ELA, science. Now, the social studies will be quickly out. And then there's digital literacy standards, mental health standards. So, there's a lot of different things that, you know, once they change those things, then we have to re-up everything. So, that's something that's continuing and we're doing that. So, there'll be more work on that. And then the third one that I have, we had an interesting year, summer and last spring that we had four new district administrators in the district with new, one person was in the district, but it's a new role in a new position. So, it was a big summer for administrative changes in West Bridgewater and we've had changes over the years, but never such a big impact of an administrative team. So, really, I think my goal this year is to try to work with the four new administrators and mentor and support to try to ensure a seamless transition in each role, as seamless as it possibly can be when something, something's new. And to help so they become a strong and valued contributor to the West Bridgewater administrative team. Because we tend to here, we've always had people that stay here for a long time, usually the people that leave that, you know, they've been here for a long, a long time and, you know, seven to 10 years. And then we've had people a little longer. So, I think when they become, when they really become integrated and become an integral part of that and valued part of that administrative team, that's what makes people want to stay because they can really see that their voice matters and that they're getting something done in their schools. So, that takes, you know, you have to work with people on that. So, with those four new positions, I thought I would make that my third goal. So, any questions?
Good luck.
Good luck, the third one.
I'm not going down that road. Well, I don't know. Maybe, maybe the second guy on the right, but yeah.
He knew he was gonna say that.
Comes around, goes around.
All right. So, if there's no questions, and then I already did Planning for Success. So, I just wanted to give an MCAS update. So, it was really nice to see that we had those students with the perfect scores. Again, as I said, it, it is a big feat because it's just, you know, not to second-guess yourself with a question and answer something different or something like that. I mean, that's, that's, that's huge. So, but the MCAS itself, we did get the scores back several weeks ago. And in the past, with the legacy MCAS, I would do a presentation with graphs and charts and, you know, we were like this about state, this standard and that standard, and we need to look in this area and what our growth was. But now we have the next-gen MCAS. And we took that, the kids took that from grades three through eight in math and ELA. And it's really different from the legacy MCAS. And we're still in the learning stages of this MCAS. So, although we took it last year, it wasn't the full test until this year. And now, this is really the ramped-up, more rigorous MCAS test this year. So, it's more of a benchmark. And the state is still trying to figure it out, where the cutoffs are and so on and so forth. And in grade 10, we'll start the next-gen MCAS this coming spring. That will be all online and it will be the completely new MCAS. So, there's a few things that I just wanted to go over. And if you have kids that took an MCAS, you know, because I sent out a letter with the scores, that it really is important to realize that this test is much more rigorous than the old 20-year-old MCAS test. It's a completely different test, it's more rigorous, it has higher expectations and it shouldn't be compared to the old test. And one of the major differences are the reporting categories. If you remember before, we had warning, needs improvement, proficient and advanced. And now we have not-meeting expectations, partially-meeting expectations, meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. So, you'd think that, okay, well, if I look at that, then exceeding expectations must be advanced and proficient would be, you know, meeting expectation and so on and so forth. But they, the state wants to caution you that it's much harder to get meeting expectations than it was proficient. They're not on the same level. And one of the reasons for that is because when the old MCAS scoring was set up, we started with an MCAS in grade three and grade seven and actually it was just like, actually it didn't start with grade three, it started with four, seven and 10. And so, they were tests and then they started filling in and adding the other grade levels. But what happened is because they were separate tests that were added, the scoring wasn't the same. So, you really couldn't compare what someone did in seventh grade to what they had done in sixth grade because the way that they scaled the scores were different. What the next-gen MCAS does is it wiped everything out and started everything at the same time so that they're standardizing and scoring and scaling the scores on the same scale. That's why you see a discrepancy in specific grades. Because it was known before, I guess, that the eighth grade, say, math test was scaled differently than the seventh grade math test. So, our seventh grade math scores may have been low and the eighth grade, and then they looked at it and said, yeah, because you can't compare their apples and oranges the way they do it. Now, everything is scaled the same. And there were a few other things. Fourth grade ELA is like that too. So, they brought everything together. Last year, it was part of the test, it wasn't all the standards, it wasn't all the rigorous questions. This year was the full, full amount of standards and everything, so this was the rigorous test. So, again, we want to caution people that it's just because you get, a lot of, a lot of parents would ask, how come my kid got, didn't get meeting expectations? They only got partially-meeting expectations when all the other years they got proficient. They're not the same. They're not on the same level. It's much more rigorous, it's higher standards. So, people shouldn't compare. If you compare, you're just gonna get confused about it, so they can't compare. They also need to know that the way that they standardized everything is that they made it so that for this start, only about 50% of the kids in all grade levels actually meet expectations and exceed expectations. So, if you look at how that would be on a curve, only 50%, that's really where your state average would be and stuff. So, that's a lot lower than what we had for a percentage of proficient and advanced in the, in the legacy MCAS. So, it's already set up that way. What else did I want to say? So, we'll use it as a tool to look at our instructional practices and see if we're teaching the right content and making sure we're aligned to our standards, our curriculum and stuff. But you really can't look at it and say, oh my God, my kid got lower, so they're not learning as much. That's not what it is at all. It's, the results, and they stress this, do not mean that the students learned less. It's just that it's measuring in a different way. And the test questions and everything are different, it's different. Let's see.
So, at what point are we going to start looking at, so it's like this is the first year where it's the new, the new bar?
Last year was the first year and it was baseline, but it wasn't the full throttle test. This was. So, I've been to different things with people from the DESE and the commission saying that this is still like a baseline year. And the scores came out like they anticipated again at that 50% mark. So, now it's, let's work on this and it's something to work through. It's kind of like that we went back to 1998 when we first started the ones before and it was like, oh man, and you had to look at it different, differently, different, differently, different.
So, we can still use it as a school district, as a tool to see where we need to improve.
Yep.
But as always, the individual test scores for the MCAS really isn't for, to measure the individual students. It's more to measure the district in general.
And their preparation for the next year. So, you know, did they get what they needed to, what the MCAS is saying would make them ready? So, it's like readiness for the next year. Are they ready for next year's curriculum? But I think we want to caution and remember that it's one measure of success. We do so many types of assessments and so many different things to measure the achievement of our kids and it's not just paper pencil stuff. And this is just one measure. But like you said, yeah, we use it as a district to make sure that we're teaching the kids what they should know, understand and be able to do by the end of a certain grade level.
And that they're making progress, but we can't really use the measurements yet, that individual students are making a certain progress until after next year.
Yeah, I would, I would caution you to look that closely and use it as a big, big measurement tool for individual kids with the new, you know, where it's brand-new and it's different. And they've never had it before, you know? So, we're kind of all working together to make sure. What they did really, like we were very successful. Massachusetts is the number one state in the country. And we had one of the first tests that came out back, you know, in the 90s. And it was 20 years old and we were really achieving well on it, but it was 20-year-old test. And things have changed. And just simply going to doing it computerized, all those things. So, it's like, how good is a 21st education, 21st century education being measured by a 20th century test? That's what was happening. So, it's like, okay, we need to make this a 21st century assessment. And that's why it's different. And so, what, if the bar was here and we were achieving it, achieving it, we went up here. And so, we have something to reach for, but it takes some time. So, you don't want to, again, it's not that your students are learning less, it's just that our expectations and our rigor is being raised up. And, you know, I always try to, you know, find analogies, but I mean, I was a track coach, so we had the high jump and they kept, you know, jumping and it was easy to get over the bar. And then you went, we're going up another two, we're going up another two. You had to fine-tune some of the things you're doing in order to get to that point. But that, so that's really what we're doing. We're focusing in and we're making sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing and that all kids are gonna achieve it. And that means that we need to maybe teach kids in different ways. And that's where some of our initiatives with differentiated instruction and making sure that we're personalizing education, we're meeting the needs of the kids where they are instead of a one-size-fits-all. So, we're doing all those things. The other part of the MCAS is the accountability system that changed also. If you recall, after all the scores came in, we got a level. You were a level one school, level two, level three, level four, and they had five levels. That system is gone. We have a new accountability system. It still puts you in a category, but it's not a level. And it's not just achievement and growth that's being measured in the, or that's being levied in the accountability system. You also now have the high school completion rate, dropout rate, you know, how many kids finish in the four-year cohort, in the five-year cohort. A new measure is the progress towards English proficiency for English language learners. So, how quickly, how many years does it take an English language learner who comes to this country and comes into our schools to achieve proficiency in English? So, they're looking at that. Chronic absenteeism. Kids that are absent more than 10% of the time in the year goes into the equation. So, it's an incentive, we want to try to get kids in school and to curb absenteeism. And also at the high school level, advanced coursework completion. How many kids in the 11th and 12th grade are taking advanced courses, such as the advanced placement courses and things like that? So, it's really a way, I think, to get more kids taking rigorous advanced coursework. And we've been actually already trying to get more involvement in the advanced placement courses. But there are other advanced type coursework too. So, all those things now go into the equation of accountability. And one of the bigger focuses is closing that achievement gap for the lower-performing students. How much do we raise the lowest-performing students to reach out? So, there's two things they're looking at. They're looking at all kids and then they're looking at the lowest performers. So, there's two things that they're looking at. They put those things together through a formula. And you can end up as a school or a district that's meeting targets, partially-meeting targets, a focused targeted support group, meaning you need targeted support, or you need broad comprehensive support. Only about 15% of the schools in the state are under the targeted support categories, okay? 85% of the schools would fall right now into partially-meeting targets and meeting targets. And your, your district gets a category and your individual schools. So, in West Bridgewater, this is the first year of the accountability system and we're in the partially-meeting targets and that's partially-meeting, and it's about achievement gaps. And it's not, it's, I can tell you that the McDonald's school did, was in the meeting targets. But if you're in partially-meeting types, there's another school in partially-meeting targets, just like before, you end up that whole district because you want to bring that up. But that's, the majority of the schools are in that category. And again, even the commissioner of education is saying, don't put too much, this is the first year, we gotta see how this plays out. Because you come up with a formula and you do all these things, you put it together and then you look and you apply it and sometimes you look and say, oh, that's not what we thought would happen or this. So, this is just, again, another benchmark or baseline accountability. And I believe that with the new commissioner we have, he's gonna take another look at it with fresh eyes because, don't forget, it was a whole different leadership team that worked on this stuff, worked on the next-gen MCAS, worked on the accountability system. And then they just brought a new person in. Well, what are his thoughts on it? And honestly, he's been going around, anything that I've heard him say, he's really focusing on, let's appreciate teachers and let's give teachers what they need and working with teachers. He's not as much into the numbers of the test and the, you know? So, that'll be something to see. I mean, it's a federal mandate that we have to have these things, but how we do it, he may be a part of. I know that some people are even talking about, can we get a waiver and try a different type of assessment than MCAS? Maybe it's time to do an alternative authentic or performance task that we could come up with. And the state of New Hampshire just got a waiver from the federal government to investigate that. So, those, so there's a lot of talk about changing and we'll see what happens because we do have new leadership. And I can already tell, he's not as focused on the number and that. But we still have to abide by it because it's a federal and state mandate and it's right now. So...
I've always felt like, and we've had the same approach, no matter what the test has been or what, whether it's an audit or whatever we're going through, that there's a reason why we're doing this and we take our learnings from that and we apply them. And that's the same thing here. Like we'll take our, you know, regardless of if the benchmark is correct yet or not, it doesn't matter, we'll take their learnings from it and we'll make it better.
And there are definitely, you know, things that you can get from it. I can tell you that... I can tell you that we've already had a data analysis half-day that teachers worked on, looking at the results and saying, okay, what can we get out of this? And one of the things that came right out of it were there were a few standards or strands in math that seemed to go through each grade level. And those are the things that you can look at and say, hmm, how are we teaching this? We've had, teachers have had conversations that teach the same subject, and have looked and said, well, how come all my kids got this wrong, but all yours didn't? You know, so there's conversations of, maybe you just did something different than me. So it's useful information. It's just, it's not the only information that we have. And I don't think any school district, or school, or teacher, or anything, or student should be identified because of one test. But can we use it as part of our toolbox to always try to improve our instruction and assessment? Absolutely. And I think that's how we're, we're using it now. So it definitely will be helpful, but I'm not overly worried about it because I, I know what we've done in the past in West Bridgewater, and I know that we'll continue to do well, and we'll, this will help us even get better. So, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto business. Massachusetts Association of School Committee's official delegate. In order for our school committee to have a vote at the annual business meeting of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, it is necessary that an official delegate be designated pursuant to Article 9, Section 6 of the bylaws. Do we have anyone who's willing to step up and be our delegate?
I would love the aye.
All right. So we'd like to make a motion for Sue to be our delegate.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
When is the, do you know when the delegate voting is? What day?
The 7th, November 7th?
The Wednesday.
Right.
November 7th, yeah.
It's November 7th.
So it's that Wednesday afternoon of that conference?
It is. It's that Wednesday afternoon at like 3:00.
Was it Thursday?
And then Thursday is the full day.
We will, we're meeting November 5th. We are?
Yeah, we meet in our next meeting, November 5th.
You need to come in with the questions so we can review them.
Yes, I actually just.
Because we did not do that last year.
The resolutions.
The resolutions, yeah.
I just got those, so.
So you can go there somewhat prepared for?
The 24th of October, they're having the resolutions night up at the tavern.
The tavern?
That's for the area ones.
Yeah, do you know where that is?
Do you know where that is?
Nope, I don't go there anymore. I don't.
No, they're having our districts meeting on the resolutions. So hopefully, I'll be able to make that, and then I'll have something ready.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And what's up, all, like, our district area?
Exactly, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Assignment of policies. Policy 8304, background checks. Do we have anyone who's willing to take a look?
Donna and I will take that.
A look into their background?
Check their own background at first.
It's all he wants.
All right, so Donna and Sue, thank you. Policy 7500, school property use, that is Jim and I. We're going to table that to November. We just haven't had a chance to sit down with our new athletic, athletic director, Jen Hamill, yet.
Do you, I just, is there an update on the MASC, like, how, the policies? Are you making progress?
We're making significant progress, actually, yes. I guess, well, the last meeting was, unfortunately, Jim was sick, Jim Hardy was sick, so we had to reschedule that. We were kind of hoping to have most of it, oh, not most, but significant more amount done, but that meeting was canceled. I think at this point.
Yeah, we've made it through Sections A through D.
A through D?
Yeah.
I know it's big.
And then up through L, yeah.
So, I mean, Section B was actually the biggest one. So I think we feel very positive that that's done.
Yeah.
That really took a significant amount of time, but.
You know, it's a lot of work. You guys got a lot of work doing it, so.
Yeah.
It'll be worth it.
It'll be nice, but it is a lot of work.
A lot of work, and a lot of your own time, too, then you're ready to go to school committee business. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Warrants. Warrants Subcommittee Report. Mrs. Sullivan.
That is for me. So I have, under the Modernization Act, is that correct? Our new business manager, Michelle Fredericks, has been helping me out with that. We've had four warrants that I've signed. The first is, I, the way that I believe the most efficient way to do the Subcommittee Report would be to tell you the bill warrant, the date, and the amount. I have reviewed the backup for each warrant, and as Ms. Fredericks has reminded me, as always, the, all warrants are public record, and once they're signed, they are available in the Selectman's Office for review. So if anyone had any other follow-up questions or concerns, or just, you know, inquiries, by all means, it's public record. So the first one was a bill warrant, 13, on October 4th, 2018, was issued for a total of $264,670.10. The second was a payroll warrant, 13, on October 5th, 2018, and that was issued for a total of $471,158. The third was another bill warrant, 15, on October 18th, 2018, was issued for a total of $35,834.56. And then the last was a payroll warrant, 15, on August 19th, 2018, and that was issued for a total of $480,453.09.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public Forum. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public forum. Seeing none. Moving on to other, district-wide, district-wide school council meetings. Howard School, October 15th at 2:45 in the conference room. Spring Street School, not yet. The Roseell McDonald, October 29th at 3:30, and not available yet for the middle, senior, high school. The PTO, October 30th at 6:30 in the Howard Library. The Music Boosters are November 5th, 6:30 to 8:30 in the band room. And Athletic Boosters, not available yet, and Inclusion Matters, not available for dates yet. Middle, Senior High School, October 17th, Citizens Police Academy, 6 to 9 in the Learning Commons. October 24th, Citizens Police Academy, 6 to 9 in the Learning Commons. And October 31st, which is Halloween, Citizens Police Academy, 6 to 9 in the Learning Commons. The Howard School, October 19th, Museum of Science, Grade 4, weather, PTO-sponsored. October 25th, Grade 5 field trip to Old Sturbridge Village. And October 31st, the high school costume parade. At the Roseell McDonald School, on October 17th, grades 1 and 2, Bubbleology, PTO-sponsored event. On October 26th, Rack Your Socks, donations benefit Inclusion Matters. And October 26th, the Halloween Mash, 6 to 8:30, sponsored by the PTO, RIF, Volunteers, and WB Lions and Leo's Club. At the Spring Street School, October 18th and 19th, the kindergarten to C&amp;C Farm in West Bridgewater. October 25 and 26, the pre-K Halloween Parade. October 31st, the kindergarten Halloween Parade at 10:15. October 31st, the seniors' Halloween Parade at 1 o'clock. And November 2nd, Tide Pool Alive, New England Aquarium, 10 to 2 p.m., PTO-sponsored. Our next regular school committee meeting will be Monday, November 5th, right here, at 6:30 in the middle, senior, high school Learning Commons. Thank you. Have a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.